I like to call this regular council meeting and work session to order for Monday, November 12th. Would everybody please rise? Let's recognize all the veterans today on Veterans Day who served our country. And also, let's remember School Board President Dave Chicoletti's mom who passed away yesterday. Please salute the flag.
My flag is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gerard.
President.
Yeah.
Here.
The line is absent. Mr. Pezza.
Here.
Mr. Collin.
Here.
Mr. LaRiva.
Here.
Mr. Franchi.
President.
Mr. Teggeszucki.
Here.
Before we get started, we were in executive session discussing contract delegation and personnel issues. Also, before we get started, we're going to have a budget meeting here on Monday, next Monday, which is the 17th, 19th? Right. At 6:00 PM. It's open to the public. Anybody wants to come here, we'll have budgets to hand out. Our Christmas parade is Saturday, November 24th at, where's Ellen? What time does it start?
1:05 PM.
Excuse me, 1:00 PM. And our tree lighting festivities will be Friday night before, on the 23rd. The tree lighting will take place around 7 o'clock, but they're going to have activities all along Mill Street for the kids. Santa Claus will be there, take pictures in the art center. So, it should be a nice night. So, everything should start around 6 o'clock. Anybody wants to come? Friday, November 23rd is our tree lighting, and our Christmas parade is Saturday, November 24th. Okay. Is Jean here?
Yeah.
Oh, Ellen, you want to, we'll take care of the parade first. You want to come up and get your check?
It is my pleasure to present the check from the Borough to Ellen Scansella, and I would like to thank her and Lynda McLean and all of their crew for everything they do. It's one of the biggest days of the year for our kids and parents alike. The roads are full of people. People start early in the morning, setting their places, and it's a wonderful thing that you guys do for us, so.
I want to thank the council and everybody that helps us along the way. I want to thank everybody and whoever wants to participate, they can still do so. You've got to go to bristolboroughparade.org. It's B-O-R-O. And register, and we'll put you in the lineup. Thank you again, everybody, and we hope you have a festive holiday.
Jean Williams is here from the Grundy Foundation to do a presentation. Who it is, though?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of time, I'd just like to introduce Stacy and Evan. They'll be doing their presentation this evening. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for taking the time. My name is Stacy Tanham. I am the project coordinator for 21st Century Community Learning Centers Cohort Nine Grant.
My name's Evan Banshee. I'm Cohort Eight, project coordinator for the 21st Century Grant.
And we have a quick PowerPoint and an eight-minute video at the end that highlights our summer programming that took place at the Bristol Middle High School and Snyder-Girardi So, our program goals, just to highlight, we provide educational services to students and families, including, but not limited to, STEM literacy and the arts. We also provide nutritional and physical education and services, and we aim to remove barriers that impede students' learning, not limited to, but including economic, behavioral, social, or environmental obstacles. These are some of the requirements that we must fulfill to maintain funding. We have printed out this information for you. It's also available to send through email. I don't want to read through everything in the interest of time, but I do want to let everybody know that we were awarded three more years for each cohort, provided that federal funding is available for us. So, for both Cohort Eight and Cohort Nine, we are expecting three more years beyond what we already have funding for. We had sites at both the Bristol Middle High School and the Snyder-Girardi Elementary School. For the summer stream camp at the elementary school, we serviced rising first through eighth grade students in the school district and rising fifth through eighth grade students at St. Mark's. And at Bristol Middle High School, we serviced rising seventh through twelfth grade, and we had seven summer programs, including high school credit recovery, middle school remediation, garden club, history and culture in our midst, career workforce readiness, athletic combine, and the Bucks County Community College Lead and Succeed. And all of these programs were ran by Bristol Borough School District teachers and staff. This was our daily schedule. We had 45 minutes for each of the activities, including academics and our recreational, athletic, and performing arts activities, with a half-hour lunch provided by the Archdiocese of Philadelphia Nutritional Development Services. And we also provided lunch for the extended school year students and Bristol Riverside Theater Art Rage students. We had a bunch of partners that came on-site to our program throughout the six weeks at Snyder, Silver Lake Nature Center, Heritage Nature Conservancy, Franklin Institute, the Grundy Library, COPS and kids volunteers, the Bristol Borough Police Department, and Officer Jaeger of the Falls Township Police Department. We took field trips to Snipes Farm, which included three trips separated by grade level. All of these trips were funded by the Bristol Borough Council. They had curriculum on animals, plants, and team building, and we went to Core Creek Park for our culmination event at the end of camp, and all family were invited. We had about 200-plus members at that private pavilion, and we had different field activities and a lunch that we did for, a cookout for them. And then we did our annual Grundy Library walking trip. We went over and the librarians read to the kids and talked about how important it is to continue reading over the summer, and they had a little tour for them. We also had T-shirts for the campers and the counselors that were provided by the Bristol Borough Council as well. Each day, we had math and ELA sessions. Although they were shorter this year, we provided math and ELA every day for the students, and we have their culminating scores there. We had 99 students improve their math pre- and post-test scores by the end of camp, and we are awaiting the data for the ELA, but the students did get a lot more instruction this year. The athletics sessions, we had experienced coaches who built five-week curriculum to teach the kids each sport that they chose, whether it be football, basketball, or soccer, diamond sports, and their culminating event was a field day. And we had performing arts sessions for the first time. It was its own sector this year, and they were theater and art students and graduates who taught the students. We had a final performance, which was about 120 audience members in attendance, 70 of them being parents. And we have a video to show. Hi, I'm Stacy Tanham. I'm the project coordinator for 21st Century Community Learning Centers here in Bristol Borough School District. We invite rising first through eighth grade students into our summer stream camp for curriculum-based instruction in academics of ELA and math, as well as recreation for sports and performing arts. 21st Century Community Learning Centers is a federal grant owned by the Bristol Borough School District, and we service three sites, Bristol Middle High School, Snyder-Girardi Elementary School, and St. Mark's School. We create an atmosphere where kids come to learn and have fun in the arts, athletics, and academics to prevent the summer slide. Our staff consists of certified teachers in the classrooms for ELA and math, as well as small group tutoring sessions. We have college students that join us over the summer for some extra income, as well as employees that work with us all year long.
Hi, my name is Jenna Jabulisko. I am the director of the performing arts here at camp. I am a junior business marketing major and a dance minor at Wagner College. This year, we gave the kids the option to choose performing arts as their activity. This allows them to choose dance, singing, music theory, acting, and art. It's been so important for these kids to learn this, so we want to give them this education, let them have fun, let them learn the beauty of it, how to express themselves through song and through dance and through their art. We've been able to create a safe environment for these kids to just break out of their shells, become another character, learn a new dance, act a little silly when they're on stage, or when they're in the classroom learning about acting, and to just have fun.
I'm Janias Gonzalez. I'm in fifth grade, and I love this camp. I like this camp because there's a lot of things that I like to do, like singing and dancing. My favorite subject is singing because I have a solo, and there's a lot of cool things to do. This is a little bit of what I love to do. I got my ticket for the long way round, two bottles whiskey for the way, and I sure would like some sweet company, and I'm leaving tomorrow, what do you say? When I'm gone, when I'm gone, you're gonna miss me when I'm gone, you're gonna miss me by my hair, you're gonna miss me everywhere, oh, you're gonna miss me when I'm gone. I'm Janias Gonzalez, and this is what I like about this camp.
My name is Evan Baranowski. I went to Shenandoah University. I have a BFA in musical theater, and I teach the acting class here at the camp. The acting class is a place for the students to get creative with how they present themselves. We do a lot of activities and games that are focused on improving their improvisational skills, as well as projection and becoming a character on stage. The things that we teach and things that we learn here at camp are really important for allowing the kids to really break out and become who they are. They get to experiment with how they carry themselves, how they speak. It's really important because it really helps with their public speaking skills, and it really allows them to have the opportunity to be themselves in a safe space.
Hi, I'm Isabella, and today I'm going to be talking about camp. I like camp because I get to see my friends, and I get to dance, sing, and act. And when I grow up, it's perfect, performing arts is perfect, because when I grow up, I want to be a famous singer, I want to be a famous dancer, and then I want to be a singer and an actress. So, camp is basically my favorite part. I like my teachers because they're nice teachers, and it's weird because they always appreciate how I'm the only dancer in school that actually does a whole bunch of other different dance classes during the year and stuff. And I love Mr. Best because he's the best teacher, and he always lets me, and he always lets me do one trick in class before we leave.
Our daily academic activities consist of math and English language arts taught by certified teachers, with a focus on problem areas of the prior grade level to prepare them for the incoming grade.
Hi, I'm Erin Reynard. I'm the second and fifth grade ELA teacher here at camp, and I've been teaching for 20 years. This camp is a great opportunity for students to practice their reading and writing and to collaborate with each other for fun and exciting activities. This camp is important for students to bridge from grade to grade because it prevents the summer slide, keeps their reading level progressing forward, and it helps students practice the skills that they will need to be successful next school year.
The personal and academic needs of each camper are met or exceeded with the staff-to-camper ratio.
I love this camp because it helps with my academics and my athletics. Plus, it's a great place to be in the summer.
This summer camp not only enhances academics, but the whole student, academics, physical fitness, and the arts. One of our main priorities of this program is to work with community organizations. We employ community members, and most importantly, we address the community needs.
We're here today pretty much to deal with the number-one resource of Bristol Borough, and that's our children. It's taken a little bit of time for them to interact with the police department in a positive light. We've been doing this, this is our third consecutive year. It's always been well-received. We love me and the kids. It's a good atmosphere for us and the kids to work together, and we appreciate 21st Century giving us that opportunity.
I like this summer camp because you can do fun things and learn during the summer.
Summer camp is fun, and it makes your brain bigger, and it makes you smarter and smarter, and you can make your dreams come true.
I like this summer camp because you can do fun things.
We have community partnerships with the AOC, which is the Academic Oversight Committee, the Bristol Borough Council, and Grundy Library that help us to go on our field trips to Snipes Farm, Core Creek Park, and our annual walking trip to Grundy Library. Other local community organizations we work with are Silver Lake Nature Center, Heritage Nature Conservancy, and Franklin Institute, all of which come into our camp to work on STEM education with our campers.
Hi, my name is Kaia. Some things I like about this camp is that we get to play basketball and football, and that I get to see most of my friends. In academics, Mr. Best teaches us a lot of fun math things, and in ELA, we learn a lot of good things about poetry in ELA. I would love to come back to camp because there's a lot of fun things to do. Thank you, stream, summer camp.
We have free breakfast and lunch provided by the Archdiocese of Philadelphia Nutritional We're always looking to expand and grow. We want to invite more campers to join us, have fun while they learn. So, those were just some highlights of our summer camp at the Snyder-Girardi site. We want to take this time to thank the Bristol Borough Council and the AOC for helping us fund all these great activities that the kids really truly enjoy over the summer. We look forward to creating more videos to show what we do after school as well. And at this time, if anybody has any questions, we'll answer them.
Now, just continue the great work you're doing, and thank you.
Thank you.
The guys did a great job. Want to say anything? Well, everybody knows that this weekend, there's a fundraiser for the AOC, so hopefully, you know, we get as many people there. It just helps them keep providing a better service for the kids of this town, which, it's a great night, and it's a great way to go out and thank them for everything they do. Jean, thanks a lot, I appreciate it. Well, I go to public participation, so anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything, go to the podium and state your name and address. Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? That ends public participation. All right, so, Tony, let's start with you. You have anything?
No, I. First of all, I would like to thank the veterans and their families, and Snyder-Girardi and the Bucks County IU had a great program honoring veterans, and was attended by Mayor Saxon, Sergeant Carlos Rivera, and me. I was impressed by the staff and the students and the veterans. The veterans were very appreciative of all the efforts and told the students that the families left behind are the real heroes, and sometimes you just don't, you don't get that, you know, and they wanted to make the kids aware of it. One of the veterans even said that the teachers are the real heroes, because they have to do battle, he didn't say that, but they have to do battle every day and not just during deployment, and he thanked all the teachers for what they did for him and what they did for all the kids in town. Bristol Day, we had Bristol Day since the last meeting, and it was a great success. The weather was beautiful, and thousands of visitors filled the streets. Bristol Day always showcased our historic homes and shops, but again, our wharf in the docks attracted thousands to the food court and to the gazelle. I would like to thank the cultural and historical society for all their hard work, and the municipal workers for their preparation and cleanup for the event, and a special thanks to all the people who opened their homes up for that day. It's a lot of hard work, but it really makes the event worthwhile. And just an update on the PennDOT Rocco Street. After last month's meeting, I was contacted by Vince Serbone and Larry Kubli, traffic control specialists from PennDOT. They completed their safety studies of Rocco Street and were forwarding their proposals to the Borough. They hoped to get the work done before Thanksgiving. However, it required council approval, and it was a little too tight a schedule for being, we had just had a meeting the week before. So, it may not happen, it still may, they say it still may happen before Thanksgiving, but it may not happen until early spring. Temperature is a problem with the paints and the appliques that they have to use. The proposals were reviewed by Chief and Mr. Dillon and our engineers, and there were some, the chief had some suggestions on the impact signs that were suggested. And I'd like to thank Senator Tommy Tomlinson and his staff for making this a priority. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks for all your work with this. Dave.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dillon. I gave you a call a while ago, but I don't know if you had a chance to check it out. 638 New Buckley Street, behind the house is where the canal used to be, there's a massive maple tree, and part of it's growing into that residence yard, and his grandkids play there in the summertime. He's a little concerned for their safety. If you could check that tree out there and see if it's healthy or not. Also, we're working the elections. You're kind of like a sitting duck, and on the 600 block of Screw Street, as you come down from Buckley Street, on the right-hand side, there's two trees. The power lines are on the left, and the lines go across. There's two trees there where the residence wires are all entangled in the trees. If we could have someone look at that, maybe have Pico go out and check that out. And the other issue I had there is, and maybe Lorraine could help me out with this, I remember years ago that you and Chucky Brady went over to the lagoon and painted those benches and stuff. A friend of mine has a husband's plaque there, and she saw some of those benches were there, so maybe we could get together this summer again and do that project again. I'd be glad to help you out with that.
It was Chucky and Shirley. I wasn't able to be there that day. I want to clarify that.
But you were there the day you painted lines on the basketball court.
Yes, I was, yes.
The other issue I had, want to talk about a little bit, is I talked to Bernard today. As everyone knows, I've been pushing, trying to get the Recreation Board and Bernard together for these 30 parking spots for the economic development of Bristol. He promises me that with these 30 spots, that he could bring 40 more jobs into town, which would be good for our economy, and so I just keep pushing, but they're still, they're still that 1,800 hours apart, and I'm hoping to get that resolved. However, on the positive side of that, I talked to my good friend Joe Rowe, who used to be involved with the Recreation Board, and he had told me when he was involved that former person, Mr. Katroci, and present Recreation Board member, Mr. Dillon, were in favor, and Joe, they were pushing Joe to get this deal done, and when Joe asked Mr. Dillon, why do you want to get these parking spots to Bernard, Mr. Dillon had said it's for the economic development of Bristol. So, hopefully, Mr. Katroci and Mr. Dillon are on the same page as I am, and the three of us, and I do believe Mr. Saxon's on the Recreation Board also, and I'm sure he would want these 40 jobs coming into our town also. So, maybe between all of us, we could get this deal done and get these jobs into our town. And the other issue I got, I talked about the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act, that was passed in 2004, had the brochures. This was 2004, and then I had September, before the meeting, I had September 28th, and I do believe the meeting was like the second or the third, and the reason I'm talking about it again is on, after our meeting, on the 10th, there was another article entitled Lower Southampton Restricting Former Employees' Access in Lower Southampton, and one of the things I underlined was earlier this month, Lower Southampton stopped requiring building permits for some home renovations, such as roof replacement, after learning it had been improperly requiring the permits in violation of 2004 change in the state Uniform Construction Code. The reason I'm bringing it up again is because my own personal experience, I had to do a job in the Pinewood section of Levertown. If you go up to Levertown Parkway, when you turn into Pinewood, the sign will say, "Welcome to Falls Township." So, naturally, I thought I had to get a permit to do the roof in Falls Township. So, talking to the zoning officer in Falls Township, she said, "Well, I got good news and bad news for you. The good news is in Falls Township, you don't need a roofing permit. However, you are in Tolltown Borough," which I didn't know. So, when I went over and I made my argument, that fellow said that law pertains to New Jersey, and I didn't know what I was talking about. I just wanted to do the job, so I paid for the permit. But while I was talking to the zoning officer in Falls Township, a real nice lady, do believe her name was Mary Jo, I says, "Mary Jo, I says, why don't I need a permit in Falls Township?" She says, "'Cause of the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act." I says, "Okay. If you wanted to charge me for a permit for roofing, what would you have to do?" And she said that we would have to follow an addendum with the state, telling the state why we were going to charge you, and then get permission from the state. So, I went on the computers and stuff, it's kind of confusing, but I keep, I know that Lower Southampton no longer requires certain permits. Falls Township, Middletown, and my friend Chuck Demarcus applied for a permit in Abington, and he was told that he does not need a roofing permit in Abington also, so, so I'm just bringing that up because I keep reading these articles, okay? But like I said, I went on the computer, and it's involved, so I guess you probably have to be an attorney to figure out what's going on. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
The only thing, the only question I had, well, two things. One is, do you want it not charged for roofing permits?
Well, I just.
Just yes or? I mean, I don't know where you're going with this.
Well, I'm trying to see if we're following the, because it's not, I'm just talking.
Do you think we're charging and we shouldn't be? Is that the question?
Yes, because.
Are we charging when we shouldn't be?
Because on a lot of these things, it's not only roofing, fences no higher than six feet, replacement of any glass or windows and doors, replacement of exterior rain gutters, sidewalks and driveways not placed over basements. Sidewalks and driveways not placed over basements. Insulation of uncovered deck where the floor is no more than 30 inches high. Replacement of existing siding. I, I just, I just, I just want to know why some places where you go, hey, you don't need one, some places, hey, you do. And Mr. Sloner explained that to me, but I, I don't know where we're following that, that code or whatever. Okay.
I don't know what the purpose of this discussion is. Our esteemed councilman is talking to Falls Township people, Tullytown people and reading newspapers. Why don't you just pick up the phone and call Mr. Miller and ask to meet with him instead of doing this at every meeting? I'm not sure what you're trying to do. You're trying to embarrass me? You're trying to embarrass the borough? Okay?
I'm not embarrassed anybody. I just, I just want to know why we're not following that code.
I don't know, I don't know where you're saying.
Did you follow any addendums?
I'm not going to answer anything because you don't know what you're talking about. What we do is proper, all right? If you have questions, just call Mr. Miller and maybe we'll sit down and talk to you instead of showboating at the meetings every week.
I mean, if you think of, you know, you need a permit if you follow our construction code. You need a permit if you get new appliances delivered. And when you think, if you really read that code, if you had a new range put in, a new dishwasher put in, a new refrigerator put in, a new gas, you need permits. Do we go chase everybody down for permits? No. But just let me say something, I've been around as long as you. I think a legitimate contractor with insurance and does everything 100% right has no problem paying for a permit. I think that permit protects the homeowner. If you put a roof on and the roof's wrong and the inspector comes out and shuts that job down, or inspector comes out and says the roof was installed improperly, it protects the homeowner. If you hire electrician to put a couple receptacles in, well, why do I need a permit? Ask the people on Mulberry Street when the house burned down and the insurance company came into the borough and asked, was there a permit pulled on this job? And there was no permit pulled, they denied the claim to pay that homeowner for his home. So if you're doing things right and we're worrying about $52, you make $600, $700 a day some days putting a roof on? Are we worrying really about $52 for a building permit? Is the minimum that you can pay? Think, I think about what you're asking. Do you think it's fair that an elderly person that doesn't know if you're doing her roof properly, don't you think somebody, it's like an insurance policy that somebody goes out and says, okay, Dave, you're a legitimate contractor, how many times do we really need to worry about your work? But how about all these fly-by-night contractors that come into town and rip people off? Don't you think it's better that we side on, we caution on side of the homeowner and make sure their job is done right and they have insurance and they have everything they're supposed to have? That's my opinion.
I, I guess.
My job is, my job is to protect the people of this town, whether, who's doing the job? Come and get a building permit. It's cheap. It's a cheap insurance policy for the people that are spending $20,000, $30,000 to put a kitchen in or a bathroom in. And they have a ton of problems. Pipes are leaking. At least the inspector can say, we came out and looked at it.
Why, why is it Falls, Lower Southampton?
I don't know what, I don't know what-
Why aren't they worried about the people?
But, well, that's, that's their problem. It's not my, my job is to protect the people of this town and do the best I can to protect people from contractors that are fly-by-night and come in town and try to rip people off. Legitimate people do not mind, a legitimate contractor who does everything right does not mind paying for a permit. Our minimum permit is 50 some dollars. And you're charging somebody $10,000, $8,000, $5,000 to put a roof on and you're worrying about a $52 permit? Come on, Dave.
It, it's a form of double taxation to me.
Oh, you're, you're-
Whatever.
Well, why don't you, why don't you just, instead of charging somebody $300 a square, charge them $100 a square? You know, start changing your prices if you're, you're concerned. Everybody wants to make a ton of money, but everybody's worrying about the stupid $52 permit that protects the homeowner.
Not $52. It goes by the cost of the job.
Okay, so that means you're getting more for the job, right?
All right, whatever.
You gotta go around town and see some of the people that come in town that do horrible work.
Or don't finish.
Or they leave the job and the people have no insurance, they didn't put no insurance up. So you walk, you take a deposit, now what are you going to do? Greg, what do you have?
I want to congratulate all the candidates from, from last Tuesday. You know, Teddy Roosevelt called it the man in the arena, the people that throw their hat into the ring. You know, a lot of people, I think, might not realize what goes in win or lose. And, you know, we had some big, even though we didn't have the hyper-local stuff that gets heated up around here, we did have some big relevant elections to us. I know a number of us are happy with the outcomes, but some people aren't. And I just wanted to congratulate all the candidates because it's, it's definitely a tough thing to do that. And, and, and we appreciate people who are at least interested in serving the public. So congratulations to them. My high school social studies teacher taught me about Teddy Roosevelt though. She's sitting right back there.
I thought you heard it from Blue.
Well, between Ms. Fine and my father being a social studies teacher, that was enough. Amanda, can we get an update about, as you know, Bernard contacts me a lot about the building? And I just figured it's better to have this conversation here so that there is no ambiguity. Can, can you give me an update on the last things that he needs to do or has done in the last couple? We're talking about the Nova Care building across from Wawa.
Right, yeah. So I know we had a conversation about it. Last correspondence I had with Bernard, he had submitted a revised lighting plan to us. I did review it and we offered some comments back to him offhand. I can't remember, I want to say it was maybe two weeks ago or so.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything back from him since then.
But nothing since then?
No, but I did let him know, as I told you, that that's not holding him up from starting his construction. He does have an approved lighting plan already, so if he wanted to substitute fixtures, you know, that's sort of something that we can deal with during the construction phase. As far as starting his project, we are still waiting on a response from him regarding the sewer tapping fees and the, and the EDUs. So it was either provide information regarding what the existing flows are in his building now and how that compares to where his addition is going to be. Or I think we had said there's an additional EDU that would be required.
And maybe you could help us out with this, Greg?
Yeah.
I still don't have the signed agreements.
Right.
So we've been, since November of last year.
Not in here now, yeah.
So.
And I don't want anyone to misunderstand me thinking that I'm saying anyone's doing anything wrong. It's just-
Oh, you could, you could help us out?
Yeah, sometimes we get these conversations that people indicate happened that. I want to make sure if we're talking about this in public, everybody knows that we're on the same page.
And if he needs copies again of the agreements, I'm, you know, we'd be glad to provide them if you, if you hear from him.
Okay.
Thank you, man.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, I have a question on that. Are we talking about the outside lighting or are we talking about the addition?
This is exterior lighting, so we're saying-
Well, I would just like to say this for public record. I had your position back in the eighties. Council worked with Mr. Bernard to build that property. I'm still waiting for the three lights that are sitting that go around Nova Care. The bolts stick up, but he's, since 1980, 88, 89, he did a great job on building the place, but he never finished the lighting outside. I've had numerous conversations with him over the years, so I would stay on top of them.
And those three lights are still in this building, by the way.
I mean, I'm not sure whether I miss, whether I misunderstood last month or two months ago when he was here. The Borough, something said where we don't accept LED?
It wasn't that we, that their LED is not accepted. He has, it's those three fixtures actually that Mayor was talking about. That's the Borough standard historic type street light. I think he was looking into going to an LED one.
He was, he was, yes.
But we can use that fixture, you can energize it with LED.
Eventually you can, it does-
I mean, that's what Pico's recommending and-
Yeah.
-exterior lighting now. And I was kind of confused, but-
So the, and the-
But if it went back-
Right, right, right.
The old date, I can understand where there's some-
It is possible. I will say that. The look of it tends to be a little bit different when you switch from a high-pressure sodium to an LED fixture. They've sort of, you know, they're getting a little bit better with the technology that you can make them look a little more similar.
There's some different things available now.
Yeah. He is proposing LED fixtures. He has like parking lot lighting too, so he's proposing LED lighting for that.
Thank, that was not for his project.
Yeah.
I was confused on it, so, thank you.
I want to thank Mr. Dillon and, thank you, Amanda, sorry. I want to thank Mr. Dillon and the Borough crew the other day when that torrential rain was coming down and it's right in the middle of fall, there were tons of drains that were clogged up with leaves and a bunch of us were getting calls, I know, and they were out clearing them pretty quickly. So I know there was a lot of satisfied people in the Borough about that, so thank you for that. I also, even though it's not, I guess, officially complete, I, I just want to take off the council president's, council president hat for a second and congratulate him on another beautiful house that happens to be in our ward that he is currently building. And, you know, when we talk about professionalism on that end, you know, I don't think anybody does it better than, than Mr. D Giuseppe does. And it's another beautiful house and I think we, we are happy to see that continue to happen. And, you know, he's, he's been for a while, one of the few contractors that are actually building new houses in town and taking those risks in town. And, you know, Lorraine and I were just talking and I think you're going to be talking a little bit more about now there are other people coming from out of town that are taking those risks as well. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Looks great. And then kind of on that note as well is I'd just like to say, taking off my own council hat and business owner, I just want to encourage us all, I, I own a restaurant on Mill Street and this last, we've been open for 16 months. And I would say honestly, the last four months have been the most steady and consistent that we've seen since we've been open. And I'm not saying that about our restaurant, I'm saying that about town. I've been talking to a number of people that just are talking about how consistent the foot track, traffic has been. And that's certainly where we've been hoping to go. You know, we've, we've pushed hard, all of us have pushed hard to like drag people here and I think we've done a good job with that. And now we're just seeing kind of more of an organic thing. But I guess my only, my only caution is to say that I hope we don't become complacent and I hope to continue to still think outside of the box. I hope we don't run away from events. I hope we don't let certain things scare us away that I get could be problems at times for driving and parking and things of that sort. And while these are inconveniences at times, they're, I can say from firsthand account, they're great for local business. And now that things are really getting going, just a number of people that come in and say, wow, this town's so cool and I had no idea. And I just think we need to do whatever we can to continue to drag people here and we need to continue to be creative as well because we have a lot of creative events and I, and I just, let's not get complacent is all I'm saying. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Lorraine?
I wanted to talk about Riverfront North at what Greg alluded to. We, I met with Mr. McGrath, he was up here, and they're moving forward with the building and construction of the new homes. So we're very excited about that. Greg and I are very excited about that. I'd also like to thank the police department for stopping people on Rackliff Street near Green Lane from speeding. There, there was a great presence there in the last few months and I think it's making a difference. I don't know that many tickets, but I know people were stopped and told, you know, to watch out. So I don't know about the ticketing.
We'd like to combine education and enforcement.
Right. And I'm glad that you do. That's great. Also, I wanted to say that Santa will be at Train Pumps on Mill Street until Christmas except for on the night of the tree lighting, which it'll be at the Center for the Arts. He'll be at the Center for the Arts. So, you know, make sure that your kids get down to see Santa. And we have a lot of festivities, as Ralph told you, with Christmas. And they start at 5:00 until 9:00 that night. There's, I think there's a train down there, isn't there, a little train? And a lot of activities for kids, so please come down on that night, November 23rd. That's it.
Patty?
Now, I just wanted everybody to make sure they read this letter that we should all have in our packets from the Harriman United Methodist Church, thanking for all the support, celebrating 100 years. That came from Allison Angelaccio and Jack Ryder. And just if, Mr. Dillon, if you can email me the status on the loo boil that seems to not be changing. And if we can look into maybe, underneath the bridge on Bay Street, it seems to be really dirty over there. I know usually the guys from the firehouse come and hose it down, but there's a lot of trash under there too. And that's all I have.
Herbie?
Two things I want to mention. In, in the last month, we had a CO incident and a, and a fire, a house fire. The CO incident, we were dispatched, we got there, we found there was 17 parts carbon monoxide in, in the, in the residence. Usually nine and, or less is, is acceptable and you could find that and it's not a problem. And, and the reason that we recall was that the lady's carbon monoxide alarm was sounding. So we didn't really be able to identify a source. We talked to the lady and she told us that she had been cooking. So we ventilated the house down to zero parts per million. We turned her oven on and within two minutes, we had 60 parts per million in, in her residence. So had she been, had, if she did not have a CO alarm and had she been cooking over an extended period of time, she could have generated a lot of CO that would have affected her and her children. So there's, there's one case where the CO alarms worked, but-
Is that from a gas, like, like a gas range?
Yeah, it's a gas, the gas range was defective. It wasn't burning properly and so it was generating a lot of CO. And like I said, we got up to 60 parts per million in less than two minutes, which is pretty rapid. The second one was, we had a house fire and what happened was the, the adult came home, there were some kids in the house, the adult came home and heard the, the smoke alarm sound. So she went up to the third floor and here there was a fire in the closet on the third floor of the house where one of the children had been playing with a candle. And so again, if she didn't have that smoke alarm and been alerted, that fire would have been able to burn into, it was confined to the, the clothing. It would have extended into the room, into the house, into the roof. It was an attached house, could have easily spread to the house next door. So here's two, two things where the alarms that the Borough has provided to the residents have paid off significantly. That's the only thing I have.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Herbie? Chief?
Fortunately, we, Halloween went off without a hitch, which was good. We had a lot of pedestrian traffic, we had a lot of extra patrols out and I think we made an impact on that. Things have calmed down a little bit with the cold weather as it always does, it helps us a little bit. But still for the month of October, we had 49 domestics and 19 disturbances. We continue to battle the opioid crisis with our EMS partners and the fire department. We had unfortunately two fatal overdoses this month. We also had two double saves, for lack of a better terminology. Both situations, the parties involved, the couples were in respiratory arrest and officers brought them back with the Narcan. And also due to some aggressive patrol, they found two young females when they parked on Route 13, just in a vehicle. And Officer Steve Markle had come across, vehicle looked out of place and both were unconscious. One was in respiratory arrest when we found them, so. Also on the school safety aspect of it, that we're always concerned about working with our schools, Sergeant Rivera has completed two school safety assessments that have been forwarded to the school system. That's from the training we've sent him to, actually puts together an entire assessment, PowerPoint presentation that we provided to the school. This also helps the schools is because they are mandated by the, the latest, the latest state acts to have this completed. So we were able to complete that and we'll be working on St. Mark's next. That's where we're at.
Any questions for the chief?
Now, just thank you for the Halloween patrol on Mill Street when they do the 3:00 and the kids from school go straight to Mill Street. There were a lot of kids, but a lot of patrol when it looked safe and I enjoyed walking down there.
Yeah, we enjoyed that too. That was a lot of fun. We also participated in- We also participated, and, uh, besides that, we had officers down there. Um, we also had an officer up at trunk or treat. You know, again, we like to have that interaction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Just a couple of things. You know, in listening to the, uh, the police and fire chief both talk, I think we should all realize how lucky we are in this community, that we have, I mean, everybody's dedicated, but I think in a lot of cases, fact that we're such a small community, that they focus and they have their ear to the ground, they know what's going on in the town. And it's a pleasure working with Chiefs Slack and Chief Henry. Um, and kind of what you were talking about, Lorraine, um, this month, the, uh, police responded to 1,144 calls in Bristol Borough. We average around 1,209 a month, so. And relative to arrests, we had 38 arrests so far this year on narcotics. So I mean, we're not exempt from the opioid crisis as Chief has talked about. Also too, I believe we did, looking for the, um, what we call traffic stops. I believe during the month, on one of these quote routine traffic stops, which by the way are generally one of the worst things that a police officer has to deal with in walking up to a car not knowing what's going on. Uh, two of our officers on the car stop found a handgun and drugs in the car, and we were able to make two arrests. And of, Chief, do you have anything else on that, or?
Nothing.
Okay. Um, that's it on that. On the fire department, met with the, uh, the Chief Slack and the other chiefs in reviewing, um, the fire department. And again, Herb Slack is the, uh, chief of the fire department that does all the additional, uh, responding to, um, emergencies, medical emergencies in the town. We had eight cardiac arrests in Bristol Borough this month. Five of them were overdose-related. We're gonna have some training coming up on hazardous materials refresher, that was completed. Uh, been pushing for and, and through the chief's efforts, we're gonna have an autism awareness for first responders in December, and we're working on a location for that. Uh, one of the other things I'd like to say, I know Ralph mentioned it, the 2018 Bristol Fall Classic is this weekend honoring Dave Harris for his, uh, lifetime public support to Bristol Borough. It's gonna be at our beautiful Bristol Borough Public Works Building. If you've never been there, come out, it's $50. And, uh, every ticket purchased in the raffle gets a chance at $1,000. And all proceeds benefit year ed, year-round educational opportunities. Part of what you saw tonight, I'm really proud of watching that because of the partnership that this Borough has built along with the school district, the 21st Century, and the advise, or the academic and oversight committee. You see a lot of things on that, on those, um, videos that a lot of kids would never get a chance to do if it wasn't for the contributions that are made by all these groups. And as Councilman Crotrochi said, enjoyed the Veterans Day, um, ceremony at Snyder Girardi, and it was really great, a little bit heart-wrenching, you can see the looks on these children's faces, and they brought in their, either their fathers or their grandfathers or their great-grandfathers. And they had pictures, um, you know, set up, and they marched them down the, uh, the aisle as an honorary, uh, march. So with that, I appreciate it. That's it for me.
Okay. Bill, you have anything?
Uh, just two quick things. Uh, if, uh, take a look at our decorative street lighting on, on, uh, Mill Street. I think it's mellow, it's very nice, it's, uh, and then go up to Newtown Borough, their, their main district, and look at, at their lighting. That's the LED, the old LED lighting, it's very stark and whatever, so. Uh, there is a, you know, LEDs coming around a little bit, but, uh, I just think if you go up there and look at Newtown, uh, Borough's Main Street with their LED lighting, they save some money, but I don't think it compares anywhere near our, our lighting.
So ours is still sodium on, on Mill Street? Or ours is not LED on, on Mill?
That's, that's correct. But the next time you're riding by at night, take a look at that, and I don't think you want that, you know, in my opinion. Uh, second thing, uh, just at the Grundy Arena on, uh, Friday, November 23rd, also, there will be reduced, uh, uh, rates for public skate. So from between 2:30 and 4:30, and 7:00 to 9:00 PM, public skate admission is $5 and a dollar for skate rentals, in case you don't have your own ice skates. So that's something else that we're trying to bring people into town in advertising, so. That's it.
Okay, so just to wrap this meeting up before we, we vote on everything. Does anybody else in the public have anything they wanna comment on? Because we're going into, we have two meetings. So, you have anything else to comment on?
No, nope.
I, I had one question. The street sweeper.
The street sweeper been down, it's been in the shop to try to get fixed. Apparently they ordered more parts.
Mm-hmm.
It's been, it was up, then it was down, and so I don't know where we're. This is the last week coming up, it's down. So there won't be any more street sweeper for the rest of the year.
Okay, that's what.
So everybody that doesn't move their car, you should be happy.
They don't move their cars and they complain, and then if they get tickets, they complain, and if it's dirty, they complain, so.
Well, you can always use your brood.
Yeah.
Right.
It's weird, we're, we're sitting here talking about permits and different things, and I forgot I left this on my desk in the beginning of October, I was in here and going through some paperwork. Everybody knows I took that little garage down Jefferson Avenue and did a little thing, a little cement work, so this permit that I paid for was $119 for a little demo and to take it down, so. And it's my own house, so, I mean, I don't have a problem paying for permits. I don't, I just want, it's weird that this, I was moving papers and it's sitting here.
And he will put his permit on the window so everyone can see.
All right, so let's go into our agenda, so.
Can I start?
Number, oh, do I go to the podium?
Can I, can I, would you?
Podium?
All right.
Say your name. Everything for us?
Hi, I'm Janelle Palmer, I live over Grundy Towers. Are they still gonna run the shuttles from across the street through the town during the winter, or no?
Shuttle, which shuttle?
Uh.
Oh, you mean the, um, talk about the one.
River Runner?
No. Not, not, not the bus, the shuttle that they were running.
The one that we provide for Grundy Towers?
No, 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 the one you were doing.
Yeah.
It's right out here. I mean, it's a little stop, you, and they take you around the city?
Yeah, that's, that's.
I mean, it's that way, everybody was getting around.
The golf cart? Bucks County Transport?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think she's talking about the.
Not the bus.
River Runner.
Just a little cart thing.
Little golf cart?
Yeah.
No.
That's what was going out there.
After winter?
No.
Okay. Just curious, everybody was wondering, 'cause it was getting everybody around.
I think they're gonna keep going until they can't.
Right.
It's good or something.
Yeah.
It was getting everybody down on Mill Street that can't really.
But if you need a ride, call Greg, he'll come.
Not Greg.
Range day.
He's got a key.
Someone with a similar last name, but not me.
Paul Bill Pezzin.
He's got a key. All right, so don't forget our tree lighting next Friday, our parade next Saturday, our budget meeting Monday night to 19th at 6 o'clock. And, uh, we'll start with item number three on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to, for the approval of council meeting minutes October 8th, 2018, to accept the treasurer's report for September 2018, to accept the police and DJ's report for October 2018, to accept the fire chief's report for October 2018, to accept the inspection department report for October 2018, to accept the public works department report for October 2018, and to accept the HARB report and decisions for 10/29/18.
Second, second by Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number four.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the resolution for application to the Walk, Walk Works program.
Second by Mr. Crotrochi, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution for a multimodal transportation fund grant for $365,000 from PennDOT for Mill Street and Radcliffe Street traffic improvements.
Second by Mrs. Rodriguez, questions or comments? Tony?
I know we're doing it in phases down here, is this just one of the phases, or is it just, it was in the packet, the whole triangular thing?
Second phase. Second phase.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the borough's attorney to petition the court for the additional five mils for the 2019 budget.
I have a second, second by Ms. Cullen. So everybody knows this isn't an additional five mils, this is the same five mils.
Right.
That we've been going in for every year. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the request for extension on the land development application of 1,200 Bristol Pike to February 12th, 2019, expires November